This is Prescott City Council's study session. Today is June 27, 2023. It's 1:00 p.m. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Can Tell Me.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
And the record will reflect that Councilmember Rusing is excused from the meeting.
Very good. Our single item on the agenda today is a presentation and discussion regarding community outreach and public participation, the plan for the effluent tank pipeline, and the SR-89 widening project.
Thank you, Mayor. This presentation really serves as our kickoff for that community outreach and public participation for a series of projects that are proposed within the SR-89 corridor over the next few years. As part of the city's centralization of the city's wastewater operations, we are looking -- we're proposing to install and repurpose certain infrastructure within the corridor. Because the project requires the replacement of the entirety of the SR-89 pavement surface, the project also completes the widening of SR-89 to two lanes in each direction for the last remaining two and a half miles stretch from the roundabout at Willow Lake Road to the roundabout at Piffin -- Fiffin? Fiffin? I'm going to say it right. Fiffin Museum. So I'll turn it over to our deputy city -- Deputy Public Works Director Gwen Roswith to introduce her team and to provide the details on the projects and the plan for public participation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Gwen Rowich. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director here at the city. With me at the table is Ian Mattingly, the city's Transportation Manager and Traffic Engineer, and Tim Sherwood, our Capital Program Manager. Today, we're going to talk about an upcoming capital improvement project called the effluent tank and pipeline, as well as potential widening of SR-89. So some of the things we're going to touch on today are the centralization project itself, which is the combining of our SunDog wastewater treatment plant with our airport water reclamation facility. We're going to talk a little bit about the history of State Route 89 through the Dells area, as well as long-range transportation planning documents, how the roadway is functioning today, and the levels of service we're projecting. We're also going to introduce a conceptual layout, but I'd like to emphasize that it's conceptual in nature only, for the purpose of soliciting public feedback. We also have a guest speaker here today, Bob Cummings. He's going to talk about modern techniques for rock removal. And then we'll introduce you to our virtual meeting room, where we're hoping to receive comments from the public on this project, so that we can have the best project possible for the community. And finally, we'll talk about next steps. So let's talk a little bit about centralization. The centralization project, as I mentioned, is the combining of two wastewater treatment facilities into one. And the city committed to centralization about eight, nine years ago, when we first built the expansion to the airport water reclamation facility. Currently, in this corridor between Willow Lake Roundabout and the Fiffin Roundabout, there's a 24-inch effluent line that we use today. It serves primarily golf courses in Hanson with treated effluent from our airport water reclamation facility. In 2017, we installed a new force main from the SunDog lift station up to Lilian Lane. I'll show you that on a map here in just a minute. We've had a lot of issues with the existing effluent line that's in the Dells. I don't know if you recall, but about two years ago, we had one lane closed through that corridor for five days. Our crews were onsite 24 hours a day for five straight days to try to repair that effluent line that has been there since 1987. We've had about five major repairs in the last 10 years, and so it's time to refurbish that line, and we're going to show you what our plans are for centralization. So on this map here, it essentially shows the effluent main that exists today in yellow, which will be converted to a gravity main, which will head north through the Dells, and then off to the east and the north, and tie into the sewer main that runs around the airport, and eventually to our airport water treatment -- our reclamation facility. The project, as it's being introduced, will include the construction of a new effluent storage tank, and I'll show you a map here in a minute, that will be located near the entrance to the park on SR-89 near the Willow Lake Roundabout. We will also be installing a new effluent line that will go from that new tank up to Key Kefir Ranch, which is to the northern extent of this project, and will be re-converting the existing 24-inch effluent line to a wastewater-gravity-fed line. When we do this sewer centralization project, we will essentially destroy the surface of the roadway within this corridor. So anytime Public Works does any project, whether it's this large of a scale or even a small scale, we look at everything. We look at, what's the pavement condition? Do we need to upgrade a water line? Do we need to upgrade a sewer line? So even though this is a big project, we ask that same question. Should we be looking at the roadway surface pavement through this corridor when we come through and do centralization? Because we will have to replace the surface of the roadway, either put it back the way it is today, or we have an opportunity to potentially widen it. As we go through this presentation, our city traffic engineer is going to talk about levels of service, speed time, and travel time through the corridor, and that's where the potential for widening this two-and-a-half-mile stretch comes into play. So this map shows the effluent main that would run south. It would run from Key Kefir south to the tank, which is shown there on the left side. You can see it says "new tank," near the existing lift station that we built at Lilian Lane as part of what we call C2. As we do centralization, we built C1, then we built C2, and today, we're sitting in front of you talking about C3, which is basically Phase 3 of centralization. Are there any questions about centralization before I move on?
Councilwoman Moore.
Yeah, Gwen, just a quick question. And the centralization project, does it also include rerouting the sewer line around the tribal land and up, like, to Merson across maybe Rossor? Is that part of C3?
So Councilperson Moore, that is not a part of C3. That would be potentially the next project that we would do, and probably one of the last major components of centralization. So I want to talk a little bit about the history of SR-89. Our public works analyst, Nicole Mecho.
There we go. Councilwoman Can Tell Me had a question.
We had a little malfunction there. Sorry. Gwen, how does this affect the water lines in that area?
Councilperson Can Tell Me, there is no water line in SR-89 in this corridor.
Oh, none at all?
None.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the history of SR-89. So our public works analyst, Nicole Mecho, did a little bit of digging into the history of this. She found some pretty nifty pictures, I think. The one in the top right corner is SR-89 circa the 1920s. We don't have an exact date on this photograph, but we believe it's in the late teens or early 20s. As you can see, SR-89 at that time was a dirt path. What we do know about the dirt path is that it followed the natural way of the rocks, if you will. Obviously, at that time, they didn't have the same kind of tools and equipment that we do today, so they took the path of least resistance. And the road itself is primarily in this configuration even still today. The picture in the bottom right-hand corner is closer to the 1940s, and as you can see in the photograph, the road is two lanes paved, one lane in each direction during that time period. In our history, we found out that during that time, the only way you could get into Prescott from Chino Valley or anywhere north was up Willow Creek Road, because you couldn't really traverse this dirt path very well. When they paved the road, it was funded by federal dollars at that time. The equipment and the dynamite were all funded through federal dollars. So we know that from the 1940 time period up until 2011, that ADOT owned and maintained State Route 89 from the SR-89 interchange up north to the airport. Over time, the city and the ADOT have done widening projects along the way from Yavp and Willow Creek Road, from Deepwell Ranch to Road 4 North or 4 South in Chino Valley, and as well as the city did the Deepwell to Fiffin Trail project in 2019. So along the way, we have widened SR-89 to its ultimate four-lane configuration. That's about a 17-mile stretch between SR-69 and the interchange at Road 3 North in Chino Valley. You can see here in red on the map, the only two-and-a-half miles that are still a two-lane section of SR-89 today are from the Willow Lake Roundabout to the Fiffin Trail Roundabout. We're hoping, as part of this project, to see improvements to turning movements, as well as capacity to the roadway and roadway operations. We're looking at safety as a primary concern, and we'll talk about that in the presentation as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Ian Mattingly now. He's going to talk a little bit about long-range transportation planning that's been occurring around this corridor for as long as 20 years, and levels of service of the roadway.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Again, Ian Mattingly, Transportation Manager. So, you know, as Gwen mentioned, transportation planning related to the project with the operation of the level of service of the roadway is the topic I'll be discussing. And the need, this is where we come about for the need to, you know, bring forward a proposed widening to you. So as we regularly do, it is good practice to note any relevant transportation studies and identify -- that specifically identify projects or roadway needs. And in this case of SR-69, that has happened on -- through the Dells. So the first one is the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or SIMPO. Every year, every five years, they do the Regional Transportation Plan. This plan provides a modeling of the roadway network to determine needs for the region, including the city of Prescott. Both of the two most recent regional transportation plans identified this section of 89 as a project that is of critical need. In this screen, on the upper right, the entire table there shows the expansion needs by 2030, and the top is the higher priority projects, the middle is the medium priority projects, and then we have the lower priority projects. I just bring this as an example, that in this most recent RTP, our project is the one in blue there, AY. It's a widening of 89 from the exact limits that we're talking about here today, from two to four lanes. Now, just as a background, you can see in the lower priority projects, we have three projects highlighted. One of those is Glassford Hill in Prescott Valley, from four to six lanes. And you recall that SIMPO currently supported a request from the -- a one-time funding request from the state and was granted that to move that project forward, and that's currently underway. The other ones involve SR-89 in the Chino Valley region, and those are either in request or I think one of them has been completed. Now, if you look, you can't really read the score, but if you see ours up in the top-right corner, it says we got a score of 32.7. This is a ranking of various factors, but it basically prioritizes the project by a score. And so regionally, this project is far and above the most important project for the roadway system, and it got a 32.7. Those other projects in the mid-range ones are 12 to the 4 range, and then the ones that we've already seen funded are in the 1 range. The RTP, it should be noted, also provides a project detail sheet for the project, basically identifying in the middle there the limits of the project, and basically identical to what we're proposing as a project. Now, the city of Prescott, in our planning documents, doesn't specifically call out roadway improvements or widens, and specifically the 2015 Prescott General Plan as a planning document doesn't do that. But what it does do is it identifies goals for certain types of roadways. And you can see highlighted and then written above is that the goal of the city is to maintain a level of service C or better during peak periods on all arterials. This 89 is a major arterial by classification. And so then on the map, this map is an excerpt from that same regional transportation plan. This shows the traffic volumes, and then that related to level of service for our area in 2030 again. And you can see that there's two sections. I note the one above because while it showed in the RTP a failing section, that was actually widened in one of those projects that Gwen went over. And so that section's no longer there. It's green now and operating well. But the lower section is in this Dells area, and that's the only section of roadway in 2030 without a project improvement that will be failing. So that's just background for that.
Yeah, Ian, I would also add that that whole section is considered a level of service category F, and that's defined as roadways at or above capacity, gridlock and traffic jams common, and expect frequent stops.
Yes.
One of the highest fatality and incapacitating injury crash rates of any of those major arterials in the general area.
Yes. And the very next slide kind of goes into, just so we -- I know a lot of you are familiar with this, just to make sure we understand.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. Talk about that. But you basically summarized it perfectly. You know, level of service is ranked through a grading scale similar to school, so A through F. That section was showing, you know, a failing level of service, but it does describe the condition of the roadway. So you're going to get lower speeds as you degrade the level of service, travel times will increase, maneuverability. So this would be on like a multi-lane road, your ability to maneuver in and out of traffic freely, or if you're on a one-lane road, to be impeded by a vehicle in front of you. That's what they're talking about here. And then delays both in the travel time and access into and out of, you know, driveways, side streets, things like that. And then finally, safety. So you can obviously have a reduction in safety or increases in crashes as the level of service go down. And so what you're going to see is reduced speeds, congestion increasing, and access in and out will become difficult or more difficult as you reduce level of service. So that's just a background. So then, how are the conditions on SR-89? So you can see on the table on the right, we basically have summarized, starting in 2021 and then 2023, our 24-hour volumes, and then we have a column called AADT. So 24-hour volumes would be the actual count, the actual count of cars that's driving on the roadway, and then that's converted into an annual average daily traffic number, because we can't count all year round. So we have to take the day and the season into account, and then we calculate what that would kind of average out to on a yearly basis. So we're going to use the AADT, but regardless, that's what that's about. So in 2021, we had an approximate count of 17,006. That's on a two-lane road, that's a level of service C. Now, we're currently at 18,3 or so. You know, this depends on the day. Of course, you can go up or down, but we're seeing levels of service of C and D depending on what, where we are in the year, so on. The 2030 and 2045 counts are taken from the Regional Transportation Plan. So that's based on a model that puts in planning, but in my opinion, it's got some pretty low numbers for growth. You can see that between, in the two years since '21 and '23, we've already gone up, I mean, we've gone up 600 cars, and you're looking at a 1,000-car increase in the seven-year period following. So the good thing is that the RTP has updated every five years, and we're coming up on, you know, a renew of that study. However.
And Ian, I'd add that the reason those numbers don't continue to go up is you just have two lanes. You can't put more vehicles in those two lanes. They just start lining up one after another.
Yeah.
And then you start to see the 24-hour volume, because guess what? Drivers are going to say, I'm not going to get stuck in that traffic. I'm going to leave earlier, or I'm going to find a way to maybe be a little late. And that way, the 24-hour number's going up, but your maximums are just capped, because you can't get any more vehicles or just in a long unbroken line.
Yeah, and you'll see that in a minute here. We have a slide kind of showing the impacts on Willow Creek Road.
I'd also like to point out, Mayor, that these numbers were derived almost five years ago. Since that time, the city has, we know there'll be more development in this area with AED development. We're looking at potential for a regional park, access to the Glassford Hill Park. There will be more traffic than this table is indicating today within a very short period of time.
Yeah. And just to finish out this slide, obviously, we see by 2030, under these, we'll say, low or conservative estimates, we're moving towards the level of service D or E. In the 2030 regional plan, it showed some Fs in there, and then 2045 were E and F. Of course, all these other things to take into account that likely will speed these things along. So we know that without widening, SR-89 through the Dells will degrade to a D or E by 2030 or sooner. And then, as Gwen said, that's, you know, we have a new park coming, there's regional developments that may or may not come, but all those things impact this. Without widening, Willow Creek Road will degrade to an F by 2045 by the study. We anticipate that would happen sooner. But we do know that with widening, if you were to take the two lanes and widen them to four, you would immediately improve the level of service today to an A, and then that would remain in place until 2055, based on like a 2% growth. So what we did is we had to estimate that, and we did a 2% growth rate on traffic, and it will remain an A until, for, what is that, 32 years?
And this is the projection from the 2045 SIMPO.
Yes. Yes.
Future projection, but you'll notice that Willow Creek Road at this point is now degraded all the way down to an F. And if you look at the intersection between Willow Creek Road and Willow Lake Road, that's become fully gridlocked, because people avoid going through the narrows, and they're not stupid, they're going to find a way to go around. And that just puts more and more negative impact on those alternate routes. That just makes the widening of these narrows so critically important. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. You mentioned without widening on Willow Creek Road. Is there any real capacity to widen Willow Creek Road at this point?
I'm sorry, if I said Willow Creek Road, I meant 89.
Well, it says without widening, Willow Creek Road will degrade to.
Yes, yes. So without widening, what is happening, and I agree with the mayor, these cars are then finding alternative routes and moving over to Willow Creek Road.
Oh, I see.
Affecting it. So if I said that wrong or.
No, no, no. I just, I was misunderstanding, so I appreciate the clarity. So you're saying the impact of not widening SR-89 would create a degrade in Willow Creek Road as an alternative north-south arterial?
Yes. Yeah. What happens is when the model imitates driver behavior, so like the mayor said a couple times, if you constrain that two-lane roadway and make the delays go up and up, people will find alternative routes, and that's what they're doing here. It's become so congested and so unattractive as a route that they'll move over.
So do we have a grade on Willow Creek Road as it stands right now?
Yeah. I, we had the 2030. Let me go back up. The 2030, I think, was, so in 2030, it looks like it's a yellow, which is like a, is it a D?
Yeah, it's yellow.
So I think currently it's, they're operating As and Bs currently right now.
Okay.
Yeah. All the green, if, I didn't bring the 2018 one, but based on the current volumes, it's an A. It's hard to understand, but level of service doesn't drop until you hit like 60% of the capacity of a roadway. So it's not like 10%, like, you know, a grade of an A is your, the 10 percentile of the top. It's different with level of service. 60% capacity available in a roadway still is an A. Once it hits less than 60% use or more than that, it goes down, but it's operating well today.
Makes sense. I appreciate the clarity, Ian.
Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. So related question, Ian, and thank you. This is, this is great data, gives us a lot to consider. Without widening, the suggestion, without widening, 89, Willow Creek, will, the level of service will degrade to an F by 2045. Do we have projections on what the level of service on Willow Creek Road in 2045 will be if we are able to widen 89 to four lanes?
Well, likely it will be in the, it will likely be in the D range. If you look just south of it and north of it, south's better, because the north might still be in the two-lane configuration. But if you look south, right past Willow Lake Road, it's hard to see, but it stays in the yellow. So, you know, we know we still have issues with our roadways, and as we get 20 years out, they're going to degrade. But this section is degrading a lot because of what's happening in that 89 not widening.
Got it.
So it will go back to an E, let's say, or a D, and then maybe an E, touch an E.
Okay. Well, good. I appreciate that. The major takeaway for me is not only will this significantly impact, of course, 89 itself, if we were to go this direction, but there'd be significant impacts throughout the city, particularly on another road that we regularly hear concerns about from citizens.
Yeah. The way the RTP looks at, the regional transportation looks at things, is that you need so many north-south lane capacity. So a lot of times, it'll say, we need 10 lanes of north-south capacity between north Prescott and south Prescott. Well, you know, you get four over on Williams, like Williamson Valley Road, you get four on Willow Creek, but you want to have 12, you want to have 14, so that's where these things come in, and it affects all the other ones.
I appreciate this. Well, good. This is great information. I guess another potential solution to this is asking for a raise of hands, volunteers to move out of Prescott and stay away, but I don't think that's going to be practical, so we probably ought to look at practical solutions like this. Thank you.
So we did look at collisions as well, reviewing the past, most recent eight years that we had full years for. We had 54 crashes with two fadals. You can see kind of the breakdown of the type of crashes we had. And when I looked at this and, you know, read the reports, the first 19 and the first, you know, the 19 plus 11, a lot of the speed-related ones were, or the failure to keep in proper lanes came about at the merge points of the roundabouts. So as people came out of the roundabout and either, you know, jockeyed for position or attempted to pass, some of those 19, some of those were speed-related with differential and trying to pass. Obviously, not all. Some are just single-vehicle speed-related crashes, but failure to keep in proper lane, primarily out of the roundabouts. That's a violation of a lane or, you know, not yielding to the proper, who has the lane control. Failure to yield came at the intersection, so that's like this truck here waiting. Crashes regarding making a turn that was judged by the police to be a failure to yield, that could be taking a gap that's too small, just making a bad decision related to like gap selection. And then following too closely, there was one in here also defined as like road rage, but that's likely related to delay, congestion, frustration. Not all of these are, but there's a lot here that seem to be related to the fact that we're adding congestion and delay, and then we have these yield conditions. And so I think that the takeaway would be that some type of improvement could likely reduce some of these crashes and make the corridor safer. That's the main point. And then just to touch on speeds, you'll see it in a little bit when you get into some of the aerial videos and the virtual, and the website and things, but we're already seeing reduced peak hour speeds. If you drive it, you know, but if you go out there at 8:00, 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning coming in from Chino, so this is the Constellation Trailhead parking lot, as you come in, you know, you're feeding those, all those cars from PV and Chino, and everybody's coming in, the commuter traffic, there's a, once they merge, the speed drops in the 30 to 35 mile an hour range, maybe even lower, and then it remains there until some point where the entire queue gets moving again. That's happening on the north side in the peak hour as well. These types of things will continue. They'll worsen as we get, you know, we feed more and more cars. Obviously, sometimes reduced speeding is a good thing, but these, when you relate these crashes and things that are going on, or just capacity, that they aren't. And so I just wanted to touch on that. We'll continue to get those back. Now, you know, if you do a widening, you can also look at if there's intersections selectively placed, if there's. placed, if there's maybe a reduction in speed limit, some of those options are available to get us back to a preferred speed limit that we want to go through the corridor and then hold us to that speed limit so we don't have speed differential crashes and all these things. But with that, that's my presentation on the traffic. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those before I pass it back.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, I noticed in one of the maps you had proposed two additional roundabouts, one at Granite Dells Road, where it comes out of the Dells and connects to Highway 89, and then an additional one, probably where the regional park access point would be, or the old 89A went. And I know as a frequent driver and user of recreation in that area, hiking particularly, it can be very challenging to get out of the Granite Dells onto the highway. One is line of sight, and the other is speed of travel. It's really difficult to see both directions very far, very well, and the cars are coming very fast at that point from both directions, and it's find, hard to find the gap to get out. And I know there's a lot of sentiment against roundabouts, but personally, I really like roundabouts. I think it's great, it keeps traffic moving, it's safer. And I think with the, with the proposal that we have of a new regional park in that area in the next few years, that's going to dramatically increase traffic in that area, and those roundabouts are going to be even more necessary for the safety of people traveling on 89. So I just want to voice my support with the, the new proposed park in that area, the Gateway Park.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. That's a great transition into the next part of our presentation, unless anybody else has questions on traffic. Great. So I'm going to pass the clicker over to Tim Sherwood, and we're going to look a little bit at the conceptual layout, and then we're going to talk about rocks.
So, Councilman Moore, we're going to have some stuff to show you that you're really going to like. So as, as Gwen mentioned earlier, this, everything that we're going to show you today is strictly conceptual. We just took basically some ideas and just kind of put it down, and then as the project develops, we can look at how the project may be altered in some way. One of the projects I thought about, especially when Mayor Protem Montoya brought up, is Willow Creek Road. We can't widen Willow Creek Road anymore, it's as wide as it can get, but if you notice, as you drive through that corridor, it expands from five lanes down to four lanes, et cetera, based off the roadway that's available. As Ian and I have discussed, a four-lane configuration through the Dells, I don't think anybody wants to necessarily see that, just a double-yellow line dividing traffic. So we laid out a five-lane concept throughout the entire area. So what I'm showing you here is the current roadway on the left, and this is looking northbound, a little bit south of the Granite, Granite Gate Resort or Granite Gardens Drive entrance. This is the narrowest portion of this entire corridor. It title, it encompasses about 1,300 lineal feet from end to end, where it's just the two-lane, single-double-yellow stripe, which is about a quarter of a mile of an entire two-and-a-half-mile project. In this area here, taking some digital measurements, the back of curb to back of curb in that area is about 45 feet wide. Just the area where the rock's been removed averages 50 to 55 feet. To do a five-lane road configuration in there, we would need a minimum of 72 feet. Five-lane road concept is a 12, 12-foot center median lane with two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction with a six-foot shoulder on each side, a striped shoulder, even though the proposed concept doesn't really show it, that's what the proposed roadway would be in that corridor. Roundabouts, as you mentioned, a average roundabout, I took the Fippen roundabout as, as kind of the model. It's about 200 feet in diameter at its widest point. It narrows a little bit here and there in some of the other lanes, but the widest point is approximately 200 feet in diameter to accompany a roundabout. So as we mentioned, the, the, the picture on the right is just a computer-generated image of what this project could end up looking like upon completion. It's nothing more than that right now, other than just a conceptual idea. So to widen the roadway in this area that, that I just mentioned, we're probably looking between 10 and 12 feet on either side of the road to a rock removal that would be required to place the road in there. So somewhere in the 20 to 24-foot overall. And in this area too, because of the way it sits, fundamentally, the center line of the road would pretty much stay where it exists today. There's not really room to shift the road much in the way left or right. We would look at it as the project develops, and one of the questions we have in our survey kind of addresses existing rocks versus rocks that were previously excavated to make the original highway through this corridor. So the next one is, and I will show you.
Councilman Tenney has a question.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. Sorry to interrupt, appreciate it. You mentioned 10 to 12 feet on each side of the road. Would that be along the entire, do you have the two-and-a-half-mile corridor? You'd have to be taking off 12 feet on each side of the road or just through that narrow corner?
No, sir, it's pretty much this quarter-mile corridor. If you, if you're familiar with the area, when you, when you head northbound, you're, you pretty much have a good three-lane section until you get to this area, and then once you leave Granite Gardens, it widens out again significantly where there's some, some rock outcroppings on the, on the west side of the road, but not on the right, on the east side of the road.
Good clarity, yeah. From having been through the last 40 years, that's what I was envisioning as well, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't have people either.
Like I mentioned, this area here, we're going to be, we're going to be pretty confined to where our road alignment is now. We'll have some better options as we get to the north and south end of the project.
Got it, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Councilwoman Kentelme.
But, Tim, in those roundabouts, I'm looking at the concept drawing, well, the, the last slide. So is the roundabout narrowing down to a single lane? I was worried about the fire trucks, the big engines getting around that. Is it a double-lane round?
Yes, not as, not as proposed. Right, right now, we use the, we use the Fippen Trail Roundabout kind of as the model for what we laid on this. So it's two lanes both directions. The single lanes would, you would have single lanes most likely in the east-west connection, so Granite Dells Road or Granite Gardens Road or the entrance to the new regional park. You'd probably see a single lane in that portion of it, but the north-south corridor will still be two lanes in each direction.
Yeah, is there a specification that you use on that? Because I, I know with the new fire trucks, the new engines, they're actually longer, I believe.
Part of the design of, of a roundabout itself is, is considering the, the largest vehicle turning movement that you can run through that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And so the, the next map, and I will show you when we get to our virtual meeting room, we can zoom in and out of this map, so we'll zoom in and show you some better ideas. But this is overall the, the initial conceptual layout from Willow Lake Road out to the Fippen Trail Roundabout, showing, indicating two roundabouts at this, in this instance, on this drawing, it's shown at the Granite Gardens Drive entrance. But as the regional park plans develop, that may change. And then we also, we placed one at Granite Dells, Granite Dells Road as well. So when we move into the virtual meeting room a little bit later in the presentation, I can, I'll be able to zoom in on this map and kind of give you a little bit better idea of, or a little more detail of what's, what's there. I know it's a little difficult to see on this screen. And so, next, I want to move forward. We asked the next gentleman to come and, and visit with us today because one of the things that we've heard over and over a number of years is how are you going to get the rocks out of there? Are you going to blow the Dells up, blasting, et cetera? So we asked Mr. Bob Cummings, PE from Collin Nicholas, to come up and speak to you guys today a little bit about what options we may have and what modern rock removal techniques there are that we can utilize in this corridor.
Is there a clicker for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
You need this?
There's not one up there?
I think it's the same one.
Yeah, I think there's just.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for giving me the opportunity to address you this afternoon. My name's Robert Cummings. I'm a registered professional geological engineer. I hold a master's degree as well as a bachelor's from the University of Arizona in geological engineering. I've been practicing as a geological engineer for over 40 years. The majority of my current practice is in issues relating to rock excavation, and I, I operate as a blasting consultant, but as well as an engineer. I would mention that one of my areas of professional interest has been the execution of roadway construction projects in areas of environmental, ecological, and visual sensitivity. And this brings up the context, the concept of context-sensitive design. And when I look at the Granite Dells, if there was ever an application for context-sensitive design, this is it. And so what I'd like to talk to you this morning about is, is some of the techniques that I have used in the past that I think would be relevant to the geologic conditions on, on the Dells. The main aspect here is the use of natural fractures when blasting new cut slopes. So this particular photograph of a spectacular example of this, where you can see that the natural fracturing system was used to, to form these cut slopes, is a kind of a gateway feature on the Mount Lemon Highway, which was a multi-year roadway improvement project that I worked on between the late 1980s and the early 2000s. When I look at the Granite Dells, and this is a overhead that you've all seen before, as a geo-professional, one of the things that jumps out at me is this striking fracture arrangement. All these linear features are shear zones and persistent fractures, we call them master joints. They all represent opportunities to be revealed in the future cut slopes, and they should be what controls the future cut slopes as they control the cut slopes that are in existence now. As a blasting consultant, I also look at the fact that there's very little topsoil here. This is mostly bald-headed ground, and to put a drill on these rocks will require a lot of pioneering and a lot of effort, be able to climb up there and, and safely execute that. So because of the fracturing estate here, it, it presents opportunities to replicate the existing cut slopes so as to economize on earthwork, preserve and a natural appearance so that the form line, texture, and even the color, if the rock is properly stained, blend with the natural surroundings, minimizing the footprint, minimizing the disturbance, and hopefully saving on cost. Now, this is, I'm going to show you a picture or concept on, on how a conventional top-down blasting project would, would be done. And this may be what a lot of your constituents would be afraid of. It does not necessarily have to be this way. Top-down blasting, you have to get on top with your drilling equipment. You have to drill holes to install explosives. So you have to be able to get access to drill. And the drills have to be able to access all portions of the rock mass that need to be removed in the cut. So what this means is typically lift-wise excavation for some of these cuts. Now, you can drill different, and, and blast different slope angles. I'm, I'm going to show a one-to-one, which is fairly simple, one horizontal to one vertical. It's, it's a simple and common slope angle. There will, of course, be a geotechnical study that will recommend whatever the slope angle turns out to be. Whatever it is, from the cross-section I'm about to show you, I think you'll be able to see that multi-lift excavation will be necessary. And this is, I'm going to zip back real quickly. If you see that cross-section there extending from the upper-left across the roadway to the lower-right, this particular location is right there on the right side. That's where the cross-section was, was drawn from. So it's an actual cross-section from within the corridor. So what is shown on this image is a, these conceptual vertical dashed black lines are probably master joints because they coincide with topographic lows or shear zones. They would be features that you would want to exploit in forming the cut slopes. And it so happens that there is a master joint that catches right at the toe of this particular slope. They, they won't necessarily all do that, and I'll, I'll address that issue later. But you can see here that if you are able to get on top of this, you cannot drill all the way to grade in one pass. You will have to take it out in multiple lifts. Even if you were to drill all the way to grade in one pass and you blasted all that rock, it would take you a month of Sundays to clean it all up, and the road's going to be blocked for an extended period of time. And you can see the volume and magnitude of the disturbance and the excavation here. On this project, there aren't a lot of rock fills. In fact, I don't think there's any. I think nearly all of this material would have to be sent to waste someplace. So that just increases the amount of, of ecological disturbance. Now, on the right side, yes, that can be taken in one lift. Now, this alternative approach I'm about to talk about leverages the use of these, of these vertical joints, and this is an opportunity, as I say, that we have, with drilling controlled blast holes horizontally from the roadway grade. This takes best advantage of the natural fracturing, preserves the theme, the kind of concept of intimacy, the, the, the natural appearance of the existing highway. However, it's not necessarily cheap and it's not necessarily easy. It's, can be done, it's been done many times before. It's within the skill set of most good blasting companies. So this is a way that you would do this alternatively. Using that one fracture that happens to catch at the toe, you drill horizontal blast holes from the roadway, and you blast out what you need to, leaving a, a near-vertical cut slope. Of course, whatever cut slope is left has to be geotechnically stable, but we've seen out there that vertical cuts are stable. If it, if it can't be stable vertically, then you can make stepwise features using controlled blast holes. This is an example of doing this on the Mount Lemon Highway. What you see on the left there is a natural slope face formed from a master joint with blast holes drilled into it horizontally. I was the blasting consultant on this, several phases of this project, and we probably blasted thousands of horizontal blast holes. And on the right side, you can see what this area looks like after 20 years in service. There's no extensive raveling, there's no extensive instability, the fractures are what is controlling the behavior of the slope. Now, this is, these are instances where the center line more or less parallels the, the fracture terms. What if it doesn't? Well, if the fractures are closely spaced, you end up with something that looks like what we have on the left here, just a fine sawtoothed kind of appearance. On the right, if you have blockier fracturing, more like what I think we would have on Granite Dells, you just have areas where there's a wide shoulder in some places and a narrower shoulder in others. So some would call that overbreak, but if you put it in the plans, because you know what the fractures are that you want to break to, then you have a predicted result, you planned for it. The other opportunities that you have with horizontal hole drilling is that you can replicate topographic features, such as an intercepted drainage here shown at the left. Simply by deepening the blast holes, you lay that drainage back in the same way that nature does when it cuts in between hills to form a drainage. You can warp the ends of cuts by changing the lengths of the horizontal blast holes. On the right side, you can see the problem that would have existed had horizontal blasting not been done. There's no possible way that you could get on top of that big outcrop, nor should you. That's a, that's a major topographic feature, that's a great visual interest, makes it compelling. The Mount Lemon Highway was a designated scenic highway, it's a recreational facility. So elements of what, and that project won a number of awards, by the way, for its, the way it, the way it turned out. So that, that's why I thought I wanted to bring it to your attention today. So to summarize all of this, there are opportunities here because of the geology and because of the way technology has evolved, to create slopes that will be minimally invasive, natural appearing, and at the same time economical. Through either when, horizontal blast holes when they are necessary and drilling vertically from the top when it is necessary. But I think the industry has the capability and the flexibility to do this. I wanted to mention that when we did our horizontal blast hole drilling on Mount Lemon, we didn't have LiDAR, we didn't have means to survey in the collars and tops of blast holes like we do now. This can more readily be done, even with drones. You could drill all these horizontal blast holes in two months at the beginning of the project. You do have to occupy the roadway, so there would be some traffic control issues that the design and construction team would have to work out, could be done at night. And then as you are able, you blast out the, the roadway in, in slices. I didn't want to dwell just on the aesthetics, but I think they're important for this project. We're aware that traffic control, the timing of road closures are going to be important, control of vibrations and air blast overpressures will be important. These are, I have the laundry list here of standard things. Fragmentation is a control because you have to be able to load the rock and haul it away. A test blast would have to be done so you can see how things are working out and how to control the vibrations and air blast. All of this is standard in the industry. There is, there is one other aspect that doesn't appear on this slide that I wanted to mention, and that is that the city has committed to a CMAR method of procurement for this project, which means construction manager at risk. And what that does is involves the construction contractor and hopefully all of his subcontractors, including the blasting sub, at least in this case it should. In the design process, once the design has advanced beyond the conceptual stage, the contractor is engaged and the contractor's input is sought throughout the design process. So when the contract is let, there are no surprises to that contractor. He knows exactly what is going to be required, and he's had input in determining the constructability. He knows exactly what is going to be required, and he's had input in determining the constructability of the project. So we would not have a situation where we expect the contractor to come to the table prepared to do certain things that we think are important to achieve the end result and have that contractor not have put that in his bid, and then there are issues. So the C-MAR method of procurement, which should be a close interweaving of the geoprofessionals, the contractor community, the public outreach people, the traffic control people, and the roadway designer, is really supportive of this entire process. So that's all that I had to say. Are there any questions? Mayor Burton.
Mr. Cummings, I just wanted to say thank you for, I appreciate the attention to maintaining the aesthetic because I think that's really critical in this area, and that Mount Lemon Highway, that's certainly a worthy goal to try and achieve as we approach this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. I was under the impression when we first started looking at this project several years ago that some of the modern techniques include some types of chemicals that can be inserted into these gaps or drill holes, and there's a rapid expansion of that chemical that causes a cleaving rather than a blasting. Is that contemplated at all in this project?
Well, this project's very much at the conceptual stage, so all options are on the table, but I can tell you what my experience with non-blasting methods of rock excavation are, especially in granite. And that is that the use of expansive grouts, which I think is what you're referring to, requires a large number of very closely spaced small blast holes. And you basically pour the solution in, and you have to keep track of the temperatures because you are looking at an exothermic reaction and an expansive reaction that forces the rock apart, and the holes have to interact with each other. So instead of drilling the holes that are shown there, you'll be drilling a whole lot more. We used expansive grouts on the Paris Dam project over in Southern California, which is out east of Los Angeles. And granite is very much like this granite. It's coarse-grained, very hard, and there was a spot where, because of proximity to certain critical facilities, there was a concern that resulted in the use of expansive grouts. And I don't want to say that it didn't work, but I will say that there was a ledge of about six vertical, six to eight vertical feet, maybe 100 feet long, and it took a week to remove it. Because what happens with chemical grouts is that you create a fracture network, but you don't create any real dilation. So the rock then has to be peeled apart, and it comes out in chunks pretty much defined by the size of the holes that you drilled. Another possibility would be relief drilling and then using hydraulic impact hammer, you know, Ho-RAM. You wouldn't attack granite like this without relief drilling. You'd just be pecking away on it forever. I had a project in Phoenix near Pinnacle Peak where a homeowners' association prohibited blasting, and a guy wanted to put in some foundations for his house, and after six weeks of listening to that Ho-RAM, pecking away on, and this is a residential lot, this might have been a thousand-square-foot house, the homeowners finally said, "We've had enough. What else can we do?" And we went in there with small diameter holes, and we shot light chargers. After the test blast, somebody came up to me and said, "When are you going to blast?" And I said, "Well, we just did." I mean, you don't have to make something that's spectacular and belongs in the movies. In fact, you don't want to do that. That's a waste of energy and a waste of the public confidence. But Ho-RAM, you know, there's a place for it, and there's a place for expansive grouts, maybe here and there on the project, maybe stay if the toe comes out high. You don't want to blast again, something like that. But I can't see it for the amount of production that's going to be required on this project.
And it would seem like a utilization of that process would dramatically slow down the completion of the project, and with the high demand for traffic movement through that corridor, time would be of the essence to get it completed, cleared, and reopened.
Right, and that is an aspect that seems to come to the fore when the practicalities of most major rock excavation projects, when those realities turn into reality, and some of those ideals get put by the side because after a while, people start getting really tired of the fact that this project is not done yet and the escalation in costs and what have you.
Any other questions or concerns? Councilwoman can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just had an additional question. As you enter past the roundabout at Watson Lake, probably about a half a mile, and I'm guessing, there's a stacked rock formation that, we call it monkey ears. I don't know what it's actually called. But what happens in a case like that where they're just stacked? Do you just move them aside, or how is that treated?
Well, if you can't avoid it by relocating the road around it, and obviously it has to be removed, and it depends on how it's stacked. I was the geological engineer and blasting consultant on the Marble, the new US-89A bridge over Marble Canyon, and we had some of the bridge features that needed to be removed that were stacked rocks like that. In that case, we had this deep canyon, and we just drilled horizontal holes into the base and blasted out the foundation, and it all fell down into the river and was lost. In a case that's above ground like this, there's some ways that you can do it. You can get on top with a crane basket and have the guys drill hand-drill holes and shoot small charges and break it down. If the individual pieces of rock are small enough, it's conceivable you could put anchors in it and pull down the sections individually. A lot of times, people wonder about the stability of features like that if left in place in the vicinity of blasting. And the kind of blasting that we are talking about here would, by necessity, use relatively small chargers. It's amazing how natural rock formations, excuse me, are tolerant of ground vibrations. They just don't act like houses do. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cummings. We appreciate your long experience and expertise, and it's comforting to know that a lot of this work can be done with minimal public concern. We won't eliminate all of it, but being able to move forward and complete a project of this scope and size, I think, is certainly important to really move forward. When we look at those vehicle numbers and capacity, you know, we really have to move forward on this, and the longer we wait, the more difficult and more impactful traffic and potential accidents and fatalities and injuries are likely to occur. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, so we've talked about centralization, we've talked about traffic and the rocks, and so where are we going to go from here? So we are entering the kickoff of this project. We're looking for public input related to the widening of SR-89. Centralization is a necessary project, and we, as we said earlier, we have an opportunity to address some deficiencies in the roadway. So as part of that, staff has created a virtual meeting room, and I'm going to let Tim, oh, you don't need that, okay. We're going to let Tim, I'm going to let Tim walk you through the virtual meeting room. There will be some community meetings in addition to the virtual meeting room, but we have a lot of really good information that we've put on the virtual meeting room as well as a survey that we're asking for public input, not just from residents of Prescott, but from the region because we understand and we know that this is a regional roadway. So, Tim?
So, as Glenn mentioned, as Glenn mentioned...
Councilman Tenny, did you have a question before we begin this section?
No, sir.
Okay, please proceed.
That'd been the quickest question I ever got. So as Glenn mentioned, like I said, this is very much a regional corridor. I was the project manager for the city when we did the project at the Fippen Roundabout, and we widened that northern section to four lanes. And one of the things I gathered from our public meeting there is probably 50% of the people that attend that meeting were not Prescott residents. We had a handful from Annapolis Hills, we had people from Chino Valley, Prescott Valley, et cetera. So a number of people traveled this corridor. So we started talking several months ago about what's the best way to get this out into the public, and so working with our PR firm, Beta PR, they had done this previously on some projects in Flagstaff, so we developed a website that's a virtual meeting room. So as you come in, there's a project intro and description that kind of gives you what this site is about. Then you can close that window there, and then we'll start with, the first thing that you come to is a brief description of the project that pops up. You can read that. There's ways to navigate around there. Then instructions to get around the room. I won't bore you with each one of these right now because I'll be talking as we walk through this site. And then one of the things we'll ask everybody to do when they come in here is to please sign in. That will help us develop a database for who's interested in the project, where they might reside, how they use this corridor. Is it driving just back and forth to work? Is it from a recreational standpoint? Do you live in this area? So we will ask everybody to please sign in. There are required fields in order to have your voice heard when you participate in this process. So there are six stations in the room. You can access them several different locations. There's a drop-down menu on the left with identifying what each station does. On the far right is a map, which accomplishes very much the same thing, stations one through six, and you can also go back to the start page at any point by hitting the home symbol. For the purpose of this today, we'll use the flashing arrow on the right-hand side of the screen that says next station. When you go from one station to the next, it'll actually let you go back. So there's kind of three ways to navigate through this website. Again, every time you advance to a new station, it kind of gives you a brief overview of what you're about to see. So we have a full project corridor video. This video is about five minutes long. We've condensed it for purposes of this demonstration today that you won't have to watch the entire five minutes, but what we essentially did is we drove the entire 89 corridor from the Willow Lake Roundabout, and as it's starting here, going northbound, and then turned around and did it again southbound. This is in the morning, higher traffic volumes. As we came out of this roundabout, about 120 cars in sequence traveling southbound at this time of day, that group of cars did not break up until after Granite Gardens Road. It was just steady stream all the way down. Again, then we wanted to kind of demonstrate what happens as you're traveling southbound. When you come out of that two-lane section and merge into the single lane, as you can see, cars are merging, brake lights are coming on, and as we advance a little bit further through the video, you'll be able to see basically the steady stream of cars that are backed up. As Ian mentioned, that's where we see the reduced speeds until traffic starts to space itself out. As you see, just as you're just leaving the curve, you're not more than a quarter-mile outside of the roundabout, how many cars are stacked up in this queue trying to navigate through the Dells. So the next station is a turning movement video. What we did is, again, Beta PR went out with a camera mounted to their vehicle, and in this instance, he actually mounted it to his head and used it so you could get a bird, you can get a realistic view of what the driver sees. We did it at all the intersections in this corridor, but this one, we felt, was one to highlight, which is Granite Dells Road. The cars are not traveling that fast. It's just sped up for the purposes of visiting the plan room. So while those two movements are concerning, it's these two that we're going to see now that are the ones that I hear from residents and we experience, the difficulty that you have making either a right or left turn off of Granite Dells Road onto SR-89. The sightlines are just very difficult in that area. If you're looking there, if you're making a left, when you look back to the right, even the northbound traffic kind of blocks your vision of southbound traffic. The next area in the room is a southbound aerial video. We did several hours of drone video in this entire corridor. Again, it's around the morning rush, started out at the Fippen Trail Roundabout, and then started progressing southbound and kind of reaffirming what you saw in the ground video. So the camera starts here, and then it starts to pivot around, and will follow this group of cars as they come out of the Dells, or come out of the roundabout, headed towards the Dells. As the drone starts to travel with the traffic, I got, I talked to the gentleman that did this, the drone's top speed is about 20 to 22 miles an hour. So when the drone starts traveling southbound, you can kind of see these cars are not driving away from it. They're pretty much staying right even with the drone. So these cars are traveling in that 20 to 25 mile an hour range as they leave and start going single file through the Dells. And then as you start getting towards the curve, you see where the traffic starts to pull away a little bit, but not at a rate that you would say, you know, they're starting to really get up to speed. And then, I'm sorry, I was looking at my notes. Station four is, and again, we shot several videos through this area, but one of the things we came across, and when we saw this video, we thought it would be very relevant to the website. This is a drone doing a stationary shot. This truck pulls up, and we put a little counter in the upper left-hand corner. It took this person in this vehicle 90 seconds to make a left-hand turn during the morning, basically the morning commute. This was shot around 8:30 or so in the morning. I'm not going to show you the entire 90 seconds, but it literally was 90 seconds before this person could make their turning movement out of here. So this affects the residents, especially on that side of the road, extensively. And then you can see, we even get a second car that stacks up there before this person is able to make their left-hand turn. I think that's how they felt, too. So as you saw in that, you see the sightlines is one of the reasons we highlighted that particular intersection.
Councilman Moore.
Tim, could I interrupt for just a second and ask a quick question? That particular intersection that you showed where a proposed roundabout is, there's that building on the west side of the road where there's been one failed business after another for many, many years, and it's been remodeled extensively over and over again for each business. That would seem to be directly in the way of a roundabout. Is there a proposal that the city would use eminent domain or purchase that property to install a roundabout?
I'll show you on the next map, but there is a majority of that building that currently is in the right-of-way.
It is in the right-of-way.
As it was constructed over the years.
Yeah.
You'll see the right-of-way lines, and the right-of-way lines on this map are very accurate.
Okay.
There's a portion of that building that is entirely in the right-of-way.
Wow, thank you.
So will Mr. Cummings be handling that?
I think that's a little easier.
We'll just blow it up, right?
And I think how we address that will come later. No decision has been made about that.
So again, this is the second time you've seen this map today, but this map's more interactive. You can zoom in at any point on the map and take a look at something in a much, much closer area. So the first area we'll look at is, like I said, the narrowest part of the Dells, that quarter-mile section we talked about earlier. The current right-of-way line, the current right-of-way through that corridor is 150 feet wide. That's ADOT established that years ago. But just kind of wanted to show you where the right-of-way lines exist currently in a five-lane configuration as it kind of sits over the existing road. Like we talked about, it's a full five-lane, 12-foot lanes with six-foot shoulders on both sides. Scrolling to the north, we can show you where the, just like I said, proposed roundabout is located right now at Granite Gardens, East Granite Gardens. One of the areas, one of the things about this area, particular area, if that's where we choose to put it, is very cooperative partners on the east side there. City Prescott owns a couple of parcels, as well as Yefpi County. But as a regional park develops, we could look at possibly where that roundabout may end up in a different location. And now we'll scroll up to the roundabout on the south end, or the proposed roundabout on the south end, and Councilmore, you can see how this kind of affects what is happening at that property.
Councilman Shishka, you had a question?
Yeah, I did, Mayor.
Ian, what about bicycle lanes on this road?
Yeah, so I know that the survey and some of the outreach questions revolve around input from the public regarding that. So we're sensitive to the fact that people, you know, this is a corridor of recreation, and there's a park coming, so we really want to hear feedback on that. Again, these are just concepts, so we're just trying to, we're just putting a general, you know, typical section through here, but with the one that's shown, I mean, if you didn't have shoulders, you could have bike lanes. You could do some of those things. So no decisions have been made regardless, but we want to hear that from the public, and then we can work that in as we move forward, if that's the desire.
Okay, it's nice to see that you're open to that. Thank you.
Yeah. So as you can see here, the other location that we basically just set a conceptual roundabout, as you can see that building with the star next to it, the front part of that building is entirely in the right-of-way. So yes, sir, it would definitely be impacted by a roundabout if it was located there significantly. So as we mentioned, you can navigate any portion of this corridor with this map, zoom in as tight as you want to. Again, it's just for reference. Hopefully, people can glean some knowledge from it maybe they didn't know before.
Can we go back to that map real quick?
Yeah.
Sorry. Tim, I just... Tim, I just wanted to, as you zoom in there, I think I just wanted to make clear that where the blue lines are show the right-of-way. That's the actual right-of-way on either side. But the yellow lines are what the roadway configuration under the new proposed configuration would be.
That is correct.
So I just wanted public to understand that while we have all that right-of-way, the proposal is not to use all that right-of-way.
No, no, there's no intention to put 150-foot wide road through there.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, the last section of this, of our virtual meeting room, is the public input. This is where, after navigating this website, people will be able to go in and answer a few questions and leave their comments. And so it's information we want to glean from not just the Prescott community, but from anybody that uses that corridor. So part of the process is, and it's going to be a requirement, you have to give your name and address. That'll help us compile data for who's replying. Is this somebody that lives in the corridor? Is this somebody that travels from Chino every day? Or, like I said, uses recreational opportunities? So we asked a series of questions. And like I said, if you don't enter the information up top, you can't navigate from the first part of the survey to the second part of the survey. Or if you don't submit that, you cannot submit the survey for data collection. So we asked several, as we kind of, our presentation went along, we asked traffic questions in the first part of the survey, and then we asked more aesthetics, regional, kind of, how would you like to see the corridor when it's finished? So starting with, kind of, how often do you drive this corridor? Do you drive it daily, twice a day? Do you only use it a couple times a week? Moving along on question three, what kind of delays do you experience when you're traveling in this corridor? Do you experience any? Most of all our questions have a basically five typical survey-type responses, whether you strongly agree, agree, you're neutral, or you disagree, or strongly disagree. So like I said, do you experience delays? Question four, would you like to see traffic flow improved in this corridor? Is it, if you experience delays, you probably would like to see improved traffic flow. Another question we ponder is, would you like to see reduced speeds in this corridor? Do you think people are driving too fast? Question six, we get back to bike lanes. So would you like to see bike lanes in this corridor? And we'll, like I said, when we analyze the data, we get back from the public. It will help us determine the desire for that in this area. And then question seven, safer turning movements. As we indicate, as we showed in the video where Connor tried to make a right or a left off Granite Dell's Road, it's very difficult in some of those areas. And that's the worst-case scenario. East Granite Gardens Drive is a little better, but not much as far as sightlines go. So a lot of the intersections that are there now are just difficult to navigate with the speeds that are traveled and the sightlines that are there. And then we asked question eight was, we kind of gave three options as far as controlled intersections. We didn't identify anything specifically, but out of the three locations, if you wanted to see a controlled intersection, where would you like to see that? The two concepts that we showed on the map were Granite Dell's Road and East Granite Gardens Road. And then also, we contemplate the old Highway 89 entrance, thereby Pinion Pines.
Councilman Moore.
Kind of near the future park.
One comment, and I'm sure you've thought of this already as a user of that area, but currently, for example, at the overlook on Highway 89 for Watson Lake, it's a right-turn-in, right-turn-out only. And if you want to go south, well, because you have to turn right, you just go down to the roundabout and flip around and you hit south. And I think that would be a very sensible solution for the park because you do have the old 89 loop and you could just go right-turn-in, right-turn-out, and you go to Fippy Museum, hit the roundabout, and you can flip around and go back the other direction without having to change the location of a potential roundabout at Granite Gardens, just a thought, because it works well.
It's one of the benefits of a roundabout, especially if you have a couple in that corridor, you're not very far from someplace where you can make a U-turn.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So can I ask a silly question? Is this website live?
It will be tomorrow.
Okay, I just curious. And I imagine before the meeting's over, you'll tell us how to get to it.
Absolutely.
Coming up.
Yep. You guys are ahead of us today.
I know, you're on it.
So on area nine or the question nine, this is where everybody can leave their questions or their comments or questions about traffics and intersection improvements in that corridor. There is no limit to characters in this box. We've kind of run a couple tests on it, so it's not limited to a certain number of characters. People can write what their thoughts and comments are and not be limited to what that is. So once you're through with the traffic portion of it, we kind of asked some questions about the dells themselves. So question 10, would you like the city to maintain the aesthetics of the dells to the greatest degree we can during this process? That will help us basically develop some of the design on how we remove rocks. So improvements within the corridor will require removal and replacement of some rocks. We're asking folks if there's, we're going to haul some rocks away, is there someplace you'd like us to take them? Is there a park? Is there someplace, you know? We're open to suggestions. If there's something, because if we're going to take them someplace other than put them in the back of a truck and haul them someplace, we'd like to know what that is. And then the contractor can determine, or the contractor can help us as far as how we facilitate that.
Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very impressed with the research and the thought that's gone into this. I also really appreciate that though you've got a sample for, you know, what this might look like, it's not, dare I say it, in stone at this point. It's more what's referred to in Japanese as a tatakidae. It's a plan on, it's a whacking board. You put the plan on the board and people come and take whacks at it. And that's what I'm seeing you're looking for is for people to come and take whacks at this and say, you know, you formed this for us. You let us know what you want this to look like. I really appreciate that it doesn't look like, you know, for sure we're moving this direction. How many people are in favor? How many people are opposed? Okay, great, let's start next week. This is really well thought out and I appreciate all the thought and the effort that's gone into this so far. And hopefully, with a lot of good public input, we'll be able to come up with something that meets the greatest needs of the highest number of people and preserves Granite Dell's the best that we can. That's a place I love. I've been wandering around in there since I was 13 years old and I'm the last person who wants to see a bunch of stuff blasted out. But I also understand that, you know, I don't hardly ever drive through there unless I'm going out birding or whatnot, but a lot of people drive through there regularly and we need to balance those needs. Thanks for all your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what Councilman Tenney said. I mean, I've been really impressed with not only what you guys have in place as you've contemplated this project, but the process that you've even started today. And I love that we have a little panel over here and that you're bringing in subject matter experts and that you're making very, very clear to the public that this process is part that you want them to be on the inside of. So I just, I've been wowed today. So I'm just really impressed with you guys' approach to this today. Thank you.
Thank you. This is not a project that anybody in Public Works takes lightly. It's, we understand the ramifications and the consequences of doing a project of this magnitude in that area. Next question through here is kind of traffic flow and traffic safety, and it kind of weighs traffic versus aesthetics. So is it more important to you to preserve that corridor? Is it less important or equally important to balance traffic and aesthetics? And then one of the last questions we ask is, would you like to see increased signage related to recreational activities in this corridor with a proposed regional park coming along, as well as a lot of different trailhead access through there? Would you like to see more signage posted through there? And then again, item 15, it's just another area for people to put their comments in there. And so once you're finished with the questions and added your comments, you hit done, and then the survey is recorded for that particular person and we'll compile that data. And as Gwen mentioned, this is just the first phase. This is the first time we've attempted something like this. We would typically have a project go to a public meeting. In this instance, we feel like we want to get public feedback for a timeframe before we sit down in a public meeting. And I think the public will feel like they're being heard. And so I think it could help the public meeting portion of this go a little bit smoother as we move along. And as we mentioned, this will go live tomorrow, and Gwen will show you here in a few moments how you can access it.
All right. Just wait for my PowerPoint to come back up.
There it is.
Technology, there we go. All right. So what are our next steps? Where are we going to go from here? As Tim mentioned, the virtual meeting room is on the city's website. I'll show you that here in just a minute. So our virtual meeting room will go live tomorrow. There is a public survey on, in the virtual meeting room, as well as if you click on the website, there's also a tab to fill out the survey there if you don't want to go into the virtual meeting room. Our plans are to have a regional community meeting on October the 4th at the Adult Center on Rosser Street. We'll be putting out public notices about that regional community meeting. And then our, once we've compiled the data that we receive from the community and the region, we'll come back in a follow-up study session in December of 2023.
A second, I had one more thing.
Of course.
It's what I do. Part of the, when you navigate to the website, which talked about the virtual meeting going live, one of the other components of that is you can register by giving your email and you can be kept up to date as the project progresses. So if you want that level of contact, you can actually, you can register your email and be kept apprised of everything we're doing up to the point where we have our public meetings, et cetera.
That's true. The email box is not a required field, but if you leave it, we'll put you on the email mailing list. So this is a screenshot of the city's website. At the bottom of the homepage, there are some tiles you can see in the bottom center is the SR89 Roadway and Infrastructure Improvement Project. If you click on that, it will take you directly into the meeting room that Tim just demonstrated. So that is your link on the city's website.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen and Tim and Ian, I just want to thank you for your presentation today. And I kind of want to echo what Council Mayor Protem Montoya said. I think this model that you've rolled out today of this virtual meeting room should be used in all upcoming projects. I think if we had done something like this when we did the Lincoln Low Water Crossing, you know, project would have gone so far in communicating with the public and increasing transparency and involving the community members that were affected by that project because in the end, it was a negative experience where it could have been a positive experience. And then we had to play catch-up and try to smooth things over. And I think the more we can do upfront, like what you're doing here and future projects will be so beneficial. So thank you for this approach and I hope we continue to use it in future projects.
Mayor Protem.
I just, on that, on the note that Councilman Moore just brought up, are there things that we as a council can do to help drive people towards this that you guys know of? I mean, outside of telling our friends and family and sharing the information? You weren't ready for that question, were you?
I do believe, and I do believe this will go up on the city's Facebook page as well. We'll reach out all our social media outlets to get this out there.
And I would imagine we'll be hearing from Cindy Barks real soon. So we're happy to spread the word in any way that we can and point people toward the website. That's where we'll be posting any information or data.
So you guys may or may not know this, but I started doing Facebook Live events on the City of Prescott's Facebook feed. So I would love to have at least two of you come on there and talk at some point in the future. We can get that scheduled so that we can kind of highlight this and drive people towards it.
We'd be happy to do that. Thank you. All right. So in terms of this project's schedule, it was our intention to spend fiscal year 2024, or at least a six-month period, which we will be, doing community outreach and input into the project. And then in the second half of fiscal year 2425, we're proposing to move into design of the project. As I said, there's quite a bit of work to be done in design on the centralization side of it, and hopefully we'll have some good direction on the street, whether we'll be putting it back the way it is or if we'll be looking at ways to improve levels of service well into the future. And then in fiscal year 2526, we'll begin construction. We anticipate about an 18-month construction schedule for this project between the sewer and the road. That concludes our...
Councilman Moore.
All right.
One thing that has been absent from today's discussion is how is this going to be paid for? And we don't need to get into a big, long discussion, but just basically, can you tell in a very nutshell what the proposal is for how, because we're doing a capital project for centralization plus a roadway, so these are two, really two different projects in tandem. What is the funding mechanism for these projects?
So we have identified this project in the five-year capital plan. The street portion of the project will come from the 1% sales tax from the street fund. And the centralization portion of the project will come from the wastewater fund. So the wastewater portion of the project is split between development impact fees and rates. And the street portion, of course, is all street fund. And we have programmed that into the six-year capital program. We have some options for other funding sources, potential funding sources with Central Yabapai Metropolitan Planning Organization. We may receive some funding from one-time state funding.
I was wondering if ADOT might be involved in this, since it is a state highway.
So we'll be seeking some other funding. I know it's been mentioned that we have community partners such as Yabapai County, other communities because it is a regional roadway. So some of those discussions still need to be had, probably from a political level as opposed to a staff level, but we're open to those conversations as well. We've programmed in about $26 million. About 11 million of that is for the centralization portion, and the other 15 million is for the roadway.
Yeah, even though it is a state highway, ADOT has transferred full responsibility to the City of Prescott in this section. So the last E-Board meeting that I attended of CIMPO, they were looking at three different priority options for funding. And I advocated very, very strongly for this project to be included. So I think it's important that members of the council reach out to ADOT and the executive director there to let them know how important this project is because I'm only one of five votes there and I think I swayed one or two, but not enough to make it to the top priority. So I think when you look at the broad scope of this project and how many travelers, whether they're commuters or shoppers or tourists, utilize this corridor, it should be a very, very high priority, not only for their interests, but as you saw, the increasing escalation of vehicle traffic and potential impacts, whether it's fatality crashes or injuries, et cetera. And then how we can likely expect more detour activity impacting alternate routes, whether it's Willow Lake Road or Willow Creek Road. This really has to be pushed hard to get CIMPO and state transportation funding assigned So I think that completes your presentation. Am I correct, Gwen?
It does. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time today. If you have questions, you know where to find us.
Well, I do intend to open this up to a public comment at this time, but I want to make sure that if anybody does want to come up and comment to the council, that we're really focusing on the public participation and outreach component of this presentation because the actual details of planning and construction, we're going to see quite a bit more of before it gets into a defined project structure. So if anybody does want to come up and address us at this time, I'd recommend that you keep your comments related to the outreach plan, the virtual meeting room, and the other proposals we have heard about, including the public in soliciting their interest.
I don't have any public comment cards, Mayor.
So I'd like to thank the mayor and council members for the opportunity to speak, and also the staff for the wonderful presentation, and Mr. Cummings for, in some way, alleviating some of the anxiety that some of us may have. So I'm not just a member of the public, which I am, but I'm a stakeholder. So the virtual room is very... which I am, but I'm a stakeholder. So the virtual room is very helpful for many, but not for all of us. I, I own a piece of property that I've been, it's right on Highway 89. It's my residence, and it's my business of 20 years' standing. So the road widening is absolutely necessary. I see the need for that every single day. For those stakeholders who live there, we're looking at it from a different angle. Not that it's just a good improvement and needs to be done, but what will it do to our lives? So I'm not very technically inclined. In fact, I sometimes come crying to the office saying, I can't do this online. But as this thing develops, I want to be able to prepare for how it's going to impact me, not just me personally, but my business, my livelihood, my life. And I'm sure other stakeholders want to know the same thing. So I'm hoping to be, to some degree, helpful to me, involved in the actual details that may not be available to, or necessarily of interest to the general public. And so I thank you for your time. I hope you will consider that for those of us who are right on that line. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, very good then. That concludes our study session for today. And we'll adjourn for about 20 minutes here, and then reconvene for our voting session at 3:00 PM.
Nice job.
This meeting's adjourned.